I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to welcome everyone to our March 3 meeting. And please note we have one council member absent, Mr. Halpaskin.
And we'll go straight into items from council. We do have one item pulled over from last meeting or request, and that was the pedestrian crossings. Mr. Alvarez brought that up. So how would you like to proceed, Mr. Alvarez? I know that the attorney has some stuff for us.
Do we want to take that last or first? Is that what you're asking?
We can go ahead and take it now, but...
I'm fine with it, yeah.
Restate the question, or...
Well, if you recall, last council meeting, I had requested more information about what constitutes jaywalking in our community, whether the local laws or any other state laws that have impact on the jaywalking that I've observed in our community. Specifically, we were talking about, I think, Rio Grande around the Houston HEB.
Right.
Rio Grande, and Rent. We were talking even across council chambers on Main Street versus Navarro and so forth.
That's right.
So I think you were able to find some information for us.
Absolutely. And I was hesitant to answer the question off the cuff last week because it is complicated. It's way more complicated than you would think it would be for just simply a jaywalking statute. Remember that it's not a local ordinance. This comes from state law, and it is in the Transportation Code, Section 552.005. And council members, I've passed around to each of you a copy of that section of the law. It's just three quick little paragraphs. But you'll note that in the first paragraph, it says that a pedestrian shall yield the right-of-way to a vehicle in the highway if crossing at a roadway out of place, basically other than in a crosswalk. All right? That is not illegal to cross in those places except Paragraphes B and C, really just Paragraph B, unless there's a vehicle coming and the pedestrian fails to yield the right-of-way. So the general rule on the roadway is a pedestrian can cross without it being jaywalking so long as the pedestrian is yielding the right-of-way to a vehicle. All right? That's what we call an allocation of responsibility statute. It's so that after an accident occurs, we know whose fault it was. The second, Section B, is really where the jaywalking ordinance comes from, or statute comes from. And it says, "Between adjacent intersections at which traffic control signals are in operation, a pedestrian may cross only in a marked crosswalk." So a pedestrian can only cross in a crosswalk if we're talking about a block where both adjacent intersections are controlled by traffic lights. If you think about the street right out front of City Hall, Main Street, there is a traffic light at Wanlin, and there's a traffic light at the very next block, Church Street. So if I leave my office and take a shortcut across the middle of the block to get to Fassadi's for lunch, that's jaywalking because it's one block and there's a traffic light at both sides. On the other hand, if I go to Hoovars and I cross Wanlin, there's a light at Main in Wanlin, but there's not a light at Bridge in Wanlin. Therefore, it's not jaywalking to walk mid-block across that street. All right? It's really, really confusing. You have to pull out a map and look at it. I was asked specifically by you about South HEB, so I gave you each a map of the South HEB, and that's the one where you can see the buildings on it. If you look at the HEB building, there is the large building in roughly the center of that map. If I leave HEB and walk north across Rio Grande, I'm crossing Rio Grande Street at a point between Laurent Street, where there is a traffic light, and Stoltz or Azelia, where there is not a traffic light. And therefore, it is not jaywalking to cross from HEB directly across Rio Grande Street. Likewise, going west across Laurent, there is a light at Rio Grande, but there's not a light at Oak Street, Ash Street, or Pine Street. In fact, there's no light until you get to underpasses the railroad tracks. Therefore, it's not jaywalking to cross on that side of the street. Okay? Likewise, I was asked about the North HEB, and this one's even more confusing. The other map that I gave you is the North HEB. It shows Navarro running north-south, and that large triangular open space bounded by Salem and Guy Grant. HEB is right in the middle of that. You can see Whispering Creek Drive coming in to tee into that triangle. That is the entrance to Country Club, and there is a traffic light there. There is also a traffic light north of there at Guy Grant. So if I cross Navarro at Whispering Creek Shopping Center, that is jaywalking. However, going south from Whispering Creek Drive, you'll see the next road going down is actually Jade Drive before you get to Salem. There is a light at Salem, but there's not a light at Jade, which means if I cross directly in front of HEB, it's not jaywalking. It's very, very difficult, I think, for any of us to sit here and say whether any incident of crossing the road is jaywalking. The most important thing for a pedestrian to remember, I think, is a pedestrian shall yield the right-of-way to a vehicle unless they're in a crosswalk. And I would encourage all pedestrians, obviously, to yield the right-of-way to vehicles everywhere if they can for their own safety. I hope that answers the question. It's a correct answer, but it's not terribly easy to understand.
Is there the possibility of a local ordinance to address? Can you go beyond just the state law in this matter or not?
There is a possibility of us being more restrictive than state law if we wanted to. I would, if you were to ask me to research that, the first thing that I would do is ask the police chief about the ability to enforce that without taking resources from other crimes that they're investigating in order to determine whether it's worth doing. And I would want to report back to you that on that first before we went any further with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is that enough for that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Thomas. I know it's confusing and just ask everybody to use their best judgment, a little common sense, and be very, very careful. Under that one discussion, though, I did have a talk with a young lady who mentioned there were some issues with some crosswalks, specifically by Golden Corral, Navarro and Sam Houston by Walgreens, Navarro and Salem by the Bank of America, and Navarro and Mockingbird. Apparently, some of those crossings may not be working. I know Lynn's not here, and the city manager, I gave her a copy of this to check those out, just to make sure that if they're not functioning, they need to be prepared, whatever the state. Okay. Counsel, I have a couple of things. Do y'all have anything else?
I'd like to pull D-2, please.
D-2? Okay. Real quick, I just want to mention in your packet something very important is the CIP list. It's for our next meeting. Make sure you spend some time looking over that for our next meeting. That's a pretty big, pretty important project. It's a lot of work that went into that report, as usual, so be prepared of that, prepared to review that. And also, if y'all want to pass this around, this is the Dan, let me read it, Dan Coleman Community Partner Award presented to City of Victoria for their faithful partnership in helping build 85 homes in the Golden Crescent. And this is from the Habitat for Humanity. We did receive this, and if y'all want to take a look at it, or after the meeting perhaps. And I think that was mentioned here.
It was.
Right. Okay. And she left it for us. She didn't have it that night, but I wanted you guys to see it, so. Okay. Anything else under items from council? Seeing none, we'll move on into citizens' communication. So this is a time where anybody wants to come up to the dais and speak to us, please state your name and address, and try to limit your comments to five minutes out of a courtesy to everyone else. Don't be shy.
I can never be accused of being shy. My name is Kim Pickens. My address is 812 Blythe. I am here both as a volunteer with the Victoria Area Homeless Coalition and as a concerned citizen. Victoria can no longer ignore the issues of homelessness and poverty. This January's Point in Time Count conducted by the Coalition identified 82 unsheltered and 114 sheltered residents, for a total of 196 Victorians without their own home. As of Friday, VISD has identified 820 students classified as homeless in grades K through 12. If each of those students has at least one additional family member, we are looking at 1,640 residents who are doubled up with other families or persons unable to afford a place of their own. We have amazing organizations which help make a difference in the lives of those struggling, but it is not enough to grow the matching, to match the growing needs. The face of homelessness is changing. No longer are those without roofs living on streets solely due to addiction or mental illness. We also have families affected by domestic violence, low-wage jobs, unemployment, and a lack of affordable housing. I have met people who have lost jobs, which in turn saw them lose their homes. I have met people who live in their vehicles and in the midst of their struggle to find affordable housing, suffer from health problems that have them sent to the emergency room several times. We have people on fixed incomes who are priced out of the new apartment construction and living in structures that are uninhabitable and dangerous. No matter how hard we try as a community, we will never be able to empower those living in poverty and homelessness unless we are all on the same page, from the city council to the churches, to the business community, and our general population. It is not about giving anyone a hand out, but about giving someone a hand up. I challenge our citizens to make Victoria the most compassionate city in Texas, and I challenge city council to aid this effort by acknowledging that Victoria has a problem regarding homelessness, reviewing city policies and evaluating new businesses, especially residential construction, to determine its impact on those living at and below poverty levels, to take the time to visit and volunteer with organizations that assist the homeless, to have a chance to learn firsthand the stories and needs of those without homes, to support and promote fundraising efforts and initiatives by our nonprofits and community organizations to further their ability to shoulder the responsibilities for caring for our most vulnerable populations. The good news is that we can change and be the change we wish to see in our city. It will take all of us together to make it happen. Every one of our citizens is worth this effort. I look forward to working with you all, and thank you for your time.
Hi. My name is Tracy Lopez, and I live at 2008 Sam Houston Drive, Apartment 2501. I'm, like, I have some concerns about the thing about the pedestrians as Mr. Paul's fine. Sorry. Kind of nervous here. Well, the thing is, it's sad, like, when it comes to crossing the streets, you know, there's some bus stops where, you know, there's elderly and, you know, others like with, you know, disabilities where they, they just want to cross over. You know, it's like, for instance, Virginia and Navarro, you know, a lot of people, you know, they go to Chris Kitchen there, and it's like, I was thinking, like, I don't know if y'all could, like, put a crosswalk in that area because that's like the most common, you know, bus stop that people, where they cross over right there. And another thing is that, you know, like, I've talked to other people as far as, you know, intersections being the safest. As I read in one of the, one of the newspapers this week, my, you know, my friends got hit by a vehicle, and it's like, we feel that they're not always the safest. Yeah, we may look to make sure there's no moving cars, I may turn or whatever, but, you know, speaking from experience, I got hit by a car, by a truck in 2010, when, you know, it was like, when I was crossing the crosswalk, the intersection of Sam Houston and Ben Jordan. And it was like, I looked around, I didn't see no one was moving, so I figured, you know, that's my chance before the county had quit. Well, you know, it's like, I ended up getting hit anyway, and, but, um, and it's like, there's other reasons that me and some others have been talking about how we, like, about the crosswalk ordeal, like, there's red light runners, there's people on cell phones, people arguing with each other, looking in the back, trying to get their kids to behave, or, you know, something like that, or they're also on top of the crosswalks, making it harder for us to cross. And, like, as far as sidewalks being improved, you know, that's great, but the, like, it's like what Paul had mentioned, you know, it's some of the lights, the crosswalks, they don't work. You can push and push forever, stand there, and two green lights had done, came through, and you're still standing there. And then there's one, and I even took a couple of pictures on my phone of where Save-A-Lot is, like, on Laurent and, let's see, on Laurent and Loma Vista, that, like, the fenced-in house, you're crossing from there, you push the button, but why? You know, it's like, you can't even see the ordeal because the signs are covering up. And so, it's like, if, if we're crossing or like, you know, jaywalking at those areas such as where Save-A-Lot is at, you know, some of us are like, thinking, well, we're going to cross, you know, we can't see it, or, you know, those things ain't working, so we might get a ticket if a police officer sees us. So that's what some of us are afraid of, but we just, you know, it's just that, you know, one question that, you know, I've been wondering is, when are y'all planning on maintaining the crosswalks, like the signs?
We, you said maintaining the crosswalks? I was actually going to ask city manager. I know we approved painting a third of all the repainting, the striping that's this year. I don't know if that's done yet.
Well, but I think talking more about the lights, and, you know, I'll have somebody go out and look at these specifics, but as you see those, if you'll let us know, that's probably the best way. So we'll, you know, have crews go out.
Feel free to email me if you see any of that.
And, like I said, like, I have a couple of pictures, like the one that's covered up. You know, like I said, why bother pushing the button? You can't even see it.
Those are, those are very helpful if you send them too. If you're able to, the pictures, that'd be great.
Okay.
You bet. Okay. Thank you. Maybe.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jenny Stafford. I live at 210 Weirden, and I work at Midcoast Family Services at 120 South Main. I'm also here tonight to talk to you about the homeless problem in Victoria. The problem is real, and it affects businesses, it affects law enforcement, it affects hospitals, it affects businesses, but most importantly, it has the most devastating personal effect on the families and the individuals who are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless. The problem is big, and the problem is too big for our organization to handle, it's too big for city government to handle, it's too big for any one organization, and the only way we're going to address the problem is if we work together. And to that I say, we may not be where we want to be, but thank goodness we're not where we used to be. This whole morning, I spent with Darla Sims at City Planning, working on the consolidated plan. She has called several of the providers to come in and to get our opinion about what's going on in the homeless program. The thing that was so, I hadn't planned on speaking tonight until we met this morning, but the thing that struck me so much as vital to that is, we talked about the strengths and the weaknesses of what the existing programs are, we talked about gaps, we talked about how it could be, but the thing that struck me was the words that we were saying, and the things that we exchanged, and the ideas we came up with are going to be woven into the fabric of the consolidated plan and where the city is going to be in five years. And it's not just my observations and my opinions. She's going to be speaking with all the providers. She's got meetings set up with, with several of us, and then we have a big meeting next Tuesday. And so I just want to, you know, hats off to the City Planning, to Jared, to Darla, for including, the homeless problem is not just an afterthought or something that HUD would like for us to do, but it's going to be woven into the very fabric of what we're doing. Because of the plan that was changed a few years ago, our organization has benefited greatly. The New Women's Crisis Center, which we recently celebrated our three-year anniversary, if we would have had Leap Day year this year, we would have celebrated three years, but we, we were able to do that because we had C2BG funding to get us started. That was our foundation. You look at what's happening with the Wellness Center next door to our facility, or Salvation Army, or Habitat for Humanity, over and over and over, you can see facilities that are strong and vibrant because of city involvement. As far as we're concerned, what the city has done is given us the leverage that we needed to bring in some federal and some state dollars to run the place, but what, it takes all of those pieces. And the best way that I can describe it, it's like we're sewing a quilt. We've got to have every one of those pieces so that we don't have a gap somewhere that our toe is sticking out of. So what I want to leave you with is, in five years, I hope I'm back here, unless I'm retired and staying on the beach somewhere, but I hope I'm back here and I can say, look how much further down the road we are because of the decisions that were made this year and this month, and the coming up with the consolidated plan, and hopefully one that will all agree, will not just help homeless people, but help the whole community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stafford. Citizens' communication still open? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close citizens' communication. I do want to, very quickly, I was aware of the count and that issue being raised, and I want to share some information with council. I did request staff, I asked what exactly we have done over the years with respect to housing-related initiatives, and so we looked at the last 14 years, and that's what you're looking at. The entities such as Habitat for Humanity, Midcoast, Salvation Army, Perpetual Help Home, Salvation Army Again, VISD Kids Connection, the Food Bank, but what's interesting is if you look at it after 14 years, it's $7.9 million. So I don't know what other municipalities in this area are doing, or the county, I don't know what response you'll get from them, but I think we've had a very strong hand in that, and I applaud the departments that are, that helped make all that happen. So, and most of that, it should, as was pointed out by Ms. Stafford, is federal or state-related funds, but it's a considerable effort, in my opinion, so just wanted to share that with council, not necessarily discuss it really any further for this evening. Okay. Let's move into ordinances and items with public hearings.
Item C1 is an ordinance providing for the extension of certain boundary limits of the City of Victoria, Texas, and the annexation of certain territory consisting of approximately 2.34 acres of land at the request of Navin Investments LLC, adopting a service plan for the territory to be annexed, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and publication, and declaring an effective date.
Public hearing?
Yes, we do.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing on C1 if anyone would like to speak to that issue only. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, move, we adopt C1.
Motion, second. Is there any discussion on C1? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes. C2.
C2 is an ordinance directing the city manager to execute the contract of sale to transfer approximately .478 acres of property at, and George Street right-of-way to KJ Koch Cook Lands Limited in exchange for $22,500 and declaring an effective date.
Let's move, when you, public hearing real quick? Let's, let's open the, a motion in a second. We'll open the public hearing on C2 if anyone would like to speak to that item. Seeing none, okay, we'll close that. We do have the motion. And second, is there any discussion on C2?
I just want a little bit of clarification. I went in all the maps and stuff. George Street from that intersection of Elizabeth is going to, basically going to be closed now at the end of, but we are going to keep the 150 feet, the right-of-way for the, but it's, this other part is already closed?
Yes.
Okay.
Part that goes up over towards the...
That part that goes like that? Okay.
Towards Laurent. That part's already been abandoned. This will abandon that additional piece.
Okay.
That's why there was two appraisals.
Right, because I meant...
To come up with the total dollar was...
First, I couldn't, I said, what?
Straight, yes, ma'am, and then the...
Yes. Okay. I saw that.
Very good. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Mayor and council staff would like to pull C3. We left it on the agenda in case the appraisal came in at the last minute. I know that the person seeking to buy this property is eager to get this project done, and so we were trying to provide some flexibility, but we did not get the appraisal, and so we're not ready to take up C3.
All right. C4.
C4 is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2014-15 City of Victoria budget by transferring $532,596.44 from the general fund budget and $160,000 from the Community Development Block Grant Fund budget to the construction fund budget for the Community Center Splashpad project, and amending the construction fund budget by reallocating $67,403.56 of leftover funds from the completed Dairy Road Improvement CIP project to the Community Center Splashpad project budget, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
Mayor, move, we adopt C4.
Second. Motion in a second.
Yes, there is.
Let's open the public hearing on C4 if anyone wants to speak to that. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Council, any deliberation, discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Thank you.
There's one item remaining on the consent agenda, and that's the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 17, 2015.
Will we adopt?
Second. Motion in a second. No discussion, I'm guessing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
D2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Keep Victoria Beautiful in the amount of $25,000 for the purpose of beautifying the City of Victoria and declaring an effective date.
Mayor, move, we adopt D2.
Second. Second. I know we have discussion.
You sent us an email today. Is this an update, or is it...
It was the same document.
Oh, okay, because I looked at the percentages, and I thought that was the...
Same document. There was some confusion. I didn't think it went out, but it did.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
I had a question. Whose responsibility is to maintain and keep clean the underpasses at Laurent near the HEB and Navarro near the fire station between North and Goodwin? Will those state?
I think we do, and I think, I'm not sure if the state does. John, can you help me with that? Lynn's not here tonight. It's, it's either going to be us and/or the state.
And the reason I ask, it seems like they need a little bit of attention. The logo on the Laurent underpass, the city logo, the Victoria logo, has faded, and it's almost, maybe it needs to be repainted or removed because it's just not happening there. But I didn't know if Keep Victoria Beautiful would be...
No, this is outside of Darryl.
Is it out of their...
No, certainly. Yeah, this is more a public works issue.
Okay.
So, but I made a note.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
There's always, on the other one by the fire station, there's always dirt. I don't know what that is.
It's not dirt.
Is it bats?
Uh-huh.
I thought it might be bats.
It's bats.
Okay.
Bats?
Dirt or bats that, yeah.
Austin embraces them.
We have a nice colony over there.
Yeah, make it a tourist attraction at night.
You can go watch them.
I'm assuming the street sweepers just roll through those areas like any other...
They do.
Well, my concern is not just the streets, but the sidewalks, the retaining walls, if you would, it just, they just, you know, they need to be pressure-walled. Thank you.
And the bats, they really make that, yeah.
I suspect that's our responsibility.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
I'm pretty sure it is.
I'm sorry. We update this, this plan every year, so we add things, delete things as we see they need to be, and the city manager gives us direction on, on those. We updated this year to work on the entryways into town. That's new. That's come from different discussions with council, so.
Okay. Let's see. Any other discussions on D2? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Item E1 is a resolution accepting settlement from Zurich American Insurance Company for a claim on behalf of the city in the amount of $17,800, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to finalize the settlement and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion, we approve item E1. Second. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, just very briefly, council, you're aware, of course, that only council has the authority to settle claims on behalf of the city, and that's why this is brought back to you. This is a traffic signal accident that happened over on John Stockbauer, and it is a, there is a very slight difference in the amount that they are offering to what it cost us to repair it, and so we're recommending that you approve this only because the difference is $1,629, and it's not a significant dollar-figure difference.
And it's depreciation that they took off, right?
They took off depreciation, and that's why I say it's, it's only because of the small difference. They took off depreciation, and I don't think they should have. The dollar figure that, that we sent them was the invoice cost of the actual repairs, not the cost of the item being replaced. And so I, I didn't think depreciation... And so I, I didn't think depreciation should have been applied, but the difference in dollars is so small that it's, it's probably not worth us fighting over. So I have a, a recommendation, although not a very firm recommendation, that council approve this.
Understood, thank you. Okay.
Well, we're, we're not setting the precedent, are we? Like agreeing to this and then saying, well, now you can do depreciation?
No, sir. We, we accept settlements on claims occasionally when insurance companies offer them, and we believe it's in the best interest of the city. This is one that is very close to the line, and I, and I might not have brought to you, but I, I think it's close enough that it's probably in the city's best interest that we go ahead and accept the settlement.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. We'll move into city manager reports, and I know you're going to shuffle them a little bit, so.
Since Thomas is doing number two, I thought I'd just go ahead and let him go first, and then we'll get into the rest of them.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Mayor and council, I'm here on behalf of Sherri Norrie, the court administrator, who is going to do this presentation today. She works in the legal, in a division of the legal department. However, she is very busy with the Great Texas Warrant Roundup and was unable to thoroughly prepare for tonight, so I told her I would take that load off her shoulders for her. We are excited to be participating in the 2015 Great Texas Warrant Roundup, beginning on March 7th of this year. Officers across the state will be arresting people who have warrants outstanding, and so courts across the state cooperate to publicize this warrant roundup as a way of encouraging compliance. And I'll tell you, it flat-out works. It's effective because there is a lot of publicity surrounding it across the state and within our city. Just within Victoria, we've had at least one newspaper article in The Advocate, thank you very much. We have over 3,200 warrant pending cards. That's a small card that we mail to people who have a warrant outstanding to let them know they may want to come take care of their business before March 7th. The collection agency that we use on delinquent payments has sent out over 6,400 notices to people who are delinquent on their payments to let them know that they want to come in and take care of their business before March 7th, before those officers start going out. And in addition to that, we're also putting out a TV commercial that many of you have seen on TV, and I'll show in just a minute. Collectively, those things have a great impact on our operations. Looking back at last year's warrant roundup, during the month of February, when people were taking care of their business before the officers went out, we saw an 83% increase in month-over-month number of cases closed. The fact is, it simply works, and I'm glad that we're participating in this. I hate talking about revenue because revenue is not the goal of municipal court. The goal is to see that justice is done, but of course, in this case, justice in many cases means paying a fine. Last year, the Texas Warrant Roundup saw an increase of 295% within that one month. So people are definitely coming in and taking care of their business as a result of this. And I, I commend the municipal court for the amount of work that they have to do to keep up with the workload that comes in. We have a copy of the video here to show you, and, you know, I'll just be blatantly honest about this. Part of the reason I'm showing it is so you guys can see the great work that we've done. Part of it is because this will get it on TV again for other people to see it, and anybody watching this before March 7th, I hope they will come into municipal court and take care of their business. James, if you'll play that right quick?
Went to take care of it, but life got busy, and, well, now your ticket is a warrant. But it could get worse. On March 7th, law enforcement across Texas will seek out and find anyone with an unpaid warrant. Now is your time to contact the Victoria Municipal Court to get this taken care of.
Police, we have a warrant for your arrest.
Before they come looking for you, and you end up in jail.
Pretty direct and to the point, and we don't pull any punches when it comes to this. Remember, these are situations where a person has already either failed to make a payment on their case or failed to show up in court, and so they have a warrant out for their arrest. And we're trying to encourage them to comply before that officer shows up. I would encourage anyone who's interested in coming into the court, by the way, to check the city's website, victoriatx.org. There is a link there to the municipal court where you can check to see if there is a warrant outstanding for your arrest. Just simply by typing in your last name, it'll pull up whether there's anything outstanding for you. There's also a link to make a payment directly online so that you don't even have to come down to municipal court. I will say, if you're going to try to talk to court personnel directly, please come down to the court right now. The phone system is flat overloaded, and the clerks have to give priority to the people who are standing at the window. And so if someone tries to call into the court, they may simply not get through the phone system within the day that they're trying to get it taken care of. And I'll take any questions anyone has about the warrant roundup.
How many years have we done this now?
Actually, I don't know. It's been more than that. It's been at least since before I was here, and I've been with the city for over five years now.
It was going on when Gilbert was over municipal courts, so.
20 years.
Oh, okay, okay. Just seems to be drawing more attention now. I suppose that's good and bad.
I think social media helps with that attention.
Good, good.
We don't publish the people's in the paper or anything?
No, we don't. The list would be very long. So we don't publish the list in the newspaper, but it is available on our website if anybody wants to know.
I have a question. You said that the payments were larger than the number of outstanding cards, so does that mean that somebody could possibly have had a payment plan and is not making the payments, so therefore they go back on the warrant list?
Yes, it could very well be that one person had more than one warrant outstanding. That's very common. People who don't take care of their business tend to not take care of their business over and over again. Okay, so that's one reason for that. The other reason for it is when you have a warrant that's being paid off, there are additional fees and fines that get applied to that warrant. So the dollar figure is substantially higher than it would be if you just came in and took care of your ticket during the rest of the year.
Okay. Very good. Who's next?
Jared, he's going to do a development update. We'll try to do this mid-year, so kind of give you an idea of what's going on from a development standpoint.
Good afternoon. All right, we're going to try something a little different tonight, so cross our fingers that technology works, so. All right. I guess I gave an update. Last time I was before giving you a little bit of an update was, I believe, was back in August when we were doing the, the budget work sessions. Of course, was in front of you last March talking about similar activities, so just to start off like we have in the past, just a quick look at where our population is. The most current estimate that the Census Bureau has is for January 2013 showing just over 65,000 inside the city. You see, there's a population projection for 2015 that would put it well over 67,000. I think we're probably a little less than that, but, so we're somewhere between 66,000 and 67,000, or 67,900 today. Certainly, if you've been out on the Navarro and stuff in some of the roads, it certainly feels like we're, we're at that population already. This is, in a nutshell, the building permit activity that's happened over the last three years. This is calendar year, so this is from January to December. You should have that in a, in your handout there, a copy of that. A particular note, you'll see a substantial increase in the number of single-family residential year-over-year from 2013 to 2014. We saw a 50-unit increase with 171 units being permitted. Of course, we're continuing to see a large increase in multifamily, 842 apartment units permitted in 2014. Little bit, a little bit of an uptick in our new construction activity, and of course you can see the bottom line there of over $150 million in permit activity for the calendar year. So, just kind of letting you see an update of where we are with all the hotel activity. This will be the, last year, I guess we talked about that maybe for a little while. There's one hotel still under construction that'll be complete in the next coming weeks and months, and that's the La Quinta down on Stockton Rent near US 59. 68 units is still under construction. All of those others are open for business.
You know the total rooms? The aggregate?
No, sir, I think this just tells you the number that we've permitted over the last three years was just 660.
Isn't it almost 2,000?
OC, probably.
What, I keep hearing 2,000? Okay.
So, obviously substantial increase there. We're continuing to see the concentration of activity in the same areas that we've seen it in over the last few years. The John Stockbauer corridor, continue to see lots of activity in there with recent opening of the Civil Core Office Complex, another daycare. The Victoria Senior Campus has opened up there at Airline and Stockbauer. There's another bank under construction down at Salem and Stockbauer, and of course, the four apartment complexes that are under construct, actively under construction up and down that corridor. Little more activity still ongoing out at Lone Tree with the Ken Garner Manufacturing Facility and the Victoria Emergency Technology Complex nearing completion. Still have activity that's, and redevelopment activity that's happening on Houston Highway. Of course, the New Popeyes Restaurant has opened up, so has the Dollar Tree Retail Center. Starting to see some tenant finishouts within that strip center. And then most recently, the Walmart Fuel Station has begun construction out there in front of the new Walmart.
Jared, one note on John Stockbauer and Business 59, that's all infill work.
Yes, yes. Considerable amount of infill, and I've got another slide that'll show you some of that activity here in just a little bit. Like the hotels, here's a shot of the apartment activity that we've seen over the last four years, with quite a few of them starting to become complete. The colony is nearing completion. I think there's a final two buildings at the back that are, that are remaining. There's just a few outstanding items left on the Vista Alta, which is a small addition to the Villa Apartments on Larkspur. Latigo Crossing, or Latigo Crossing is still under construction. I believe we've, they've completed their office, the clubhouse building. Getting into some of those that, that started at the beginning of this year, the Duke Apartment Complex behind the mall, they've got some partial completion of the first couple of buildings in their clubhouse facility, and then those last three are still under construction for a grand total of 1,752 apartment units being added to our inventory.
Excuse me.
There's a map showing the location of those facilities, obviously concentrated, as we said before, up and down the Stockbauer Corridor and on Zachlin's Parkway near Navarro.
You don't count the nursing home, the retirement centers? I know we've seen significant three or four facilities built in this community now.
The Victoria Senior Campus there at Airline and Stockbauer, I don't know the bed count in that. That one's fairly large. You've got Twin Pines-
One on Bridge and Mallett.
Bridge and Mallett, the Twin Pines Rehab Facility. I'm not sure how many rooms are in that. It's primarily a rehab facility. And then there's an All Care Facility that's, that added a few more units.
Those, those values are, they're not tax-exempt, they're also on the books.
Those are commercial on the books.
Commercial, okay.
And we've permitted and counted, it's just we focused recently the housing issue, the shortage, apartment shortage has been such an issue for our community, so that's kind of what we focused.
So those, those senior facilities are showing up under just commercial permit activity, not under, we're not pulling them under the multifamily.
They're still living facilities.
Yes.
You know, I don't know, they're, I guess a subcategory of, we wouldn't call them an apartment, but in some cases, they're pretty nice.
I don't think they're impacting the population. We're probably trying to-
Well, we're moving some seniors into those facilities. I'm already looking for one, but.
Well, it'll open up some, another home, maybe, huh?
Exactly.
I got you.
This slide's just showing you some of the single-family residential, residential activity. Continue to see that concentration up there on the, that area between US 87 and US 77 with Lake Forest, Terra Vista, Highland Hills, and Tuscany. The Fox Creek subdivision, that's that one kind of a little bit further south or central of town, Ben Jordan and Sam Houston. That's really gotten started, a couple of dozen houses either out there or under construction. They've really taken off. And lastly, Salem Crossing, we approved, that's out there at Salem, just east of the Loop, Home Depot, went blanked there for a second, just east of the Home Depot. We approved their final plat back in September, and we haven't seen any activity yet, so I'm not sure what's, I'm not hearing much conversation of, of what the holdup is there, if that project's been, it's obviously been put on hold for now. Now we're going to get into the fun part. Our GS division has got into a little bit of 3D modeling, they're getting into some, so some new ways of analyzing data. This is a slide showing appraised values, so obviously the higher the block, the, the higher the value is. And they've 3D modeled some of our permit activities, so let's see if we can give you a quick little demonstration of this. Your, on your last slide, on your, in your handout, the last page, there's a listing of all of the commercial projects that were over 200,000, which were shown on this map that's coming into place here. So you can see those large spikes, those are the multimillion-dollar apartment complexes that have come into town. Let me see if I can zoom around here, get up into the Navarro corridor, so you can kind of see a little bit of that. This also shows you all of the remodel activity that's been happening. Target, this one's, you can click on each one of these links, and it'll tell you exactly what the project is and the permit value. Academy did almost a $1.3 million remodel store refresh just right up the road. See Cavender's, $1.8 million new facility. This big spike that's up here to the north is the new Victoria Fire Station Number Six. Just kind of want to show you what we can do with some of the technology.
Is this publicly available?
It will be on the website soon, but the-
The tool itself?
The tool itself will be on the website, city's website, soon, so. GS was pretty proud of it, and this works a little bit better when you're not trying to use a laptop mouse. But anyway, I don't know if you have any questions. As I said, that last part of your handout has got a, kind of a table of all the activities that are in there by addition, remodel, new construction. You can see all of them there listed. We just arbitrarily chose a $200,000 threshold. With that, I just have.
Jared, I think Mr. Hagan has a question.
Yes, sir. I did have one question, just because this is the one thing that I'm asked constantly, are, are we going to get a Loobie's or a Fuddruckers? Not the, I'm not aware that that's, there's any forward progress on that.
There, there hasn't been any progress on it. Their permit is set to expire, I believe, in May of this year. They called, and we were able to renew that at 90 days at a time. Last conversation we had with them, I think, was back in November. They said the project was still, still going. They renewed their permit at that time and just told us that they hoped to start construction in 2015. So, I don't know. We'll see. I hope so.
Kind of a holding pattern, basically.
You know, anecdotally, John and I have talked about this with the, with the retail coach. I don't know if, if, if a couple of other store locations have gotten in front of us or, or what, or if they're using, some of these companies use the same construction firm, they just go from location to location, building the same store over and over again. So that's kind of why we've just conjectured that maybe some other locations have gotten in front of us, but they certainly, they have not indicated that they're pulling out. I guess we'll find out in the next couple of months if they renew their permit or, or dies. I can tell you that we've issued a permit for these three. These are some of the restaurants that we were working on with the retail coach, and Panda Express is under construction, if you've wondered what the movement of the dirt was in front of Academy. It's a Panda Express. Firehouse Subs is going in over by Buffalo Wild Wings. The tenant has already moved out, and I believe work is about to begin on, on that. And the Chipotle Mexican Grill, along with a Mattress One, are building a small strip center in front of the Hampton Inn on Navarro. So we're starting to see some amount of fruit from all those labors, but that's, that's kind of the activity that we've been seeing over the last few months, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just want to real quick praise your, it was your department, last, our last meeting, Just want to real quick praise your, it was your department, last, our last meeting, we had the gentleman here that commented about the speed at which y'all moved on things. Am I correct?
Yes.
And I forgot his name, I wanted to visit with him, but.
His was the.
Y'all heard that, yeah, I was.
Yeah, his group's out of California, they were doing the Alta Vista Apartments.
Yeah, and he had, they had a project in California that after five years, they just pulled out. They couldn't get anything done. They couldn't get the government to move there, the permits, et cetera. While it may have been more burdensome there, but anyway, y'all, he praised y'all, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you. It's been a busy year, as you can see, kind of record activity for us, with really relatively few hiccups, so I've been pleased with that.
Some of the, you know, like Mr. Hagan had brought up those restaurants, you know, we, this body has very little to do with any of that. There's some people that seem to think we do. I mean, private companies come and go as they please. They buy land from private individuals and build stores, et cetera. And obviously, testament to last week, you guys move as quickly as you can to not impede any of that. And, you know, I think that's a good thing, but we don't, we all wish we had all these restaurants overnight, but it's not up to us, so.
I think we did what we could with the retail coach and using them. I think that we've helped it along as best we can.
True, that's a very good point.
And John and Jared are still working, reaching out with the help of the retail coach. They're very actively still involved, it just takes a little while to get in the queue.
I was asked about that today, actually, by some people in Austin.
And this Panda Express, we probably talked to them 18 months ago, said they were coming. It's just, it takes a while to get in their queue, and they're only going to open up so many stores a year or whatnot, and so you've got to get in front of them, let them know about you, and show your information, and then finally get on the list.
Dumb question, but what are they?
Panda Express is a fast food Asian.
Fast food Asian, okay, thank you.
They're good, I like them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jared. So Dana is going to do an update on the library, and you had it in your read file the last meeting, and so she's going to speak from that. She's got some extra copies if anybody needs another copy. He's got his, so.
Good evening, Council. This evening, I'm presenting you with Victoria Public Library's 2013-14 Report Card, which is an update on the progress that we are making in meeting our strategic plan goals. In addition, I've given you a copy of a flyer, and it is for our Teen Robotics Club Program. It says TRC 15 at the top. Both the flyer and the report card were designed by Greg Durant, and I just wanted to point this out to you this evening. He is our graphic designer at the library, very excellent graphic designer. He recently won a Gold Addy Award at the AAF's meeting a couple of weekends ago. And so we're just really pleased that he's part of the library team and producing excellent work for us. So I wanted to point that out to you as well. In addition, the second weekend of spring break, that would be March 14th, we are having a big kickoff for our robotics programs and presenting programs that whole day. I think the morning is for teens, the afternoon is for younger kids to kind of introduce all of the new equipment we received from the grant and get them excited about joining us this next summer as part of all of our robotics programming. Now, to move into the strategic plan. This last year at the library, we had over 230,000 people walk through our doors. 373 items, 373,000 items were checked out, and our website was visited 156,000 times. We are open six days a week for a total of 60 and one-half hours per week. To provide some background on our strategic plan, it was developed in 2011, and it was through the work of a community planning committee. That included members of our business community, nonprofit organizations, leaders in various agencies, residents of all ages, and we included high school students in that group as well. And in addition, we gathered feedback from the library staff, the library advisory board, and the Friends of Victoria Public Library Board to help us identify and prioritize the services that the library provides. After that, five main areas of service were identified, and then goals were developed and reviewed by all those entities. And that is kind of how we pulled it all together to develop our plan. The last major step that was completed before implementing the plan was developing the methods to measure our progress in meeting our goals. This complete plan was approved by the library advisory board and put into place beginning in October of 2011. And it was fully reviewed and updated by that board, again, just this last spring. So looking at the report card, on page three, you see the five main areas of service. They include creating young readers with a focus on early literacy for children ages zero to five, understanding how to find, evaluate, and use information, information fluency for users of all ages, celebrating diversity, cultural awareness, satisfying curiosity, lifelong learning, stimulating imagination, reading, viewing, and listening for pleasure. And with this last goal, it's broken into two parts, one specifically focused on adult users, and the second focused on teens and children between the ages of six and 11. Now, under each goal on page three are the specific priorities we are measuring in order to meet the goal. And so, for example, under goal one, there are five priorities that we measure, either through keeping statistics or taking surveys. So in this report card format, I've identified the trends of each of our priorities. Those where we are either exceeding our goal, meeting our goal, or have an opportunity to improve. And each are identified by either a double plus, a plus, or a minus respectively. I wanted to point out to you the areas in which we are exceeding our goal and discuss areas in which we have an opportunity to improve and our plan for doing so. Some of the areas in which we've exceeded our goal include increasing attendance at our storytime programs. We offer six storytimes weekly in our building and provide storytime programs at a different Head Start location each week. We've seen an 87% increase in attendance at these storytimes when compared to attendance in fiscal year 2010-11, which was the year we started the plan. We've also had a 93% increase in the number of preschoolers who complete our summer reading program when comparing completion rates during the summer of 2011 with this past summer. In the area of information fluency, we have a strong partnership with the workforce of the Golden Crescent. We teach most classes at the library computer lab, but continue to use the workforce computer lab as available. We have had a 36% increase in number of residents attending these classes when compared to attendance during fiscal year 2010-11. And in fiscal year 1314, 739 people attended the classes we offered. Now, this current fiscal year, starting in October, we have almost surpassed this number already. We are at 620 individuals, or 629 individuals who have attended the 68 classes we've taught so far. And lastly, we've had a 92% increase in the number of juvenile media items that are checked out by our library users since 2011. Seen a big increase in growth in this area. Juvenile media includes DVDs, children's music, and juvenile playaway views, which are portable viewing device. And it also includes our juvenile eBooks available through our website. And then on the back page of your report, I've listed our priorities for year four. These all address those areas where we are not meeting our strategic plan goals and will be an area of focus. They include increasing the checkouts of our children's print collections, including picture books, easy readers, increasing completion of our summer reading program by six to 11-year-olds, and exploring options for increasing our reach out into the community through mobile or satellite services. So that is the update on strategic plan status at this point, and I am here to answer any questions.
Dana, what's considered, what's the age for a juvenile reader?
Juvenile reader.
You use the terminology juvenile. What's your age that you're considering juvenile?
We usually consider that anything from infant to about 11 or 12. And then they kind of self chooses whether they want to still fall into kind of juvenile or teen.
Mayor, I've had a chance to, well, every month I step into the library. And over the last number of years, the improvements that have been made, everything you've talked about here tonight, it's just, it's a beauty, a marvel to see all the population in there, the use of it. Any of the council members, anybody else that hasn't had an opportunity to go see the library, it seems like it's a brand-new library. It feels like a brand-new library, very welcoming, and you see a lot of traffic, and I want to compliment you for all that work that you've done, your leadership.
And that count, I was talking to the city manager earlier, 232,000 people, that's a lot. I was just thinking, how many days you're open a year, 300 and, I don't know, but that's a lot every day, so.
Right.
It's encouraging that it's being used. I did have one quick question. iPads, are those, do those stay in the library checked out?
They do right now. We circulate both laptops and iPads. The iPads are the newest that we've been trying to see how they go over. And the laptops have really taken off, because people like that opportunity to take the laptop and sit wherever they want to in the building and be able to use our Wi-Fi. The iPads, we're still working through some of the issues and trying to figure out kind of who those appeal to. Some libraries really find those appeal to really little ones, actually surprising. And so, we haven't really pushed that, but just seeing where those are going to go.
How many do you have?
We have four or five. We don't have very many, but.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
So that brings us to the Police Department's annual report. I want you to note that the chief is going first, and then Tanner's going after the chief. So I think the chief will be kind to the fire chief tonight.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Before you, I'm proud to submit to you the Victoria Police Department's 2014 Annual Report. And the report identifies several accomplishments throughout the year. And if I could just go off script a little bit, I will say that I would characterize 2014 as a department, one of perseverance and teamwork. Certainly, we faced some challenges at the beginning of the year, but I'm extremely proud of the job that the men and women of the Victoria Police Department did throughout the year, pulling together, persevering, and working as a team to collectively achieve some of the results that you'll see here today. And some of this will be a little bit of a repeat from last time, because I gave you the crime reports already. But this is our fifth straight year of Class 1 crime reduction. That continues to go down. I believe that's a great indicator of crime in Victoria, and the fact that it's continuing to go down, that being, you know, the worst or the most higher-profile types of crimes, that being violent crime, and then also our Class 1 property crimes have all been down. As you see, you know, 2014, we were down 7.92 from the year prior. And I also want to note that workload is continuing to increase. We experienced about 95,000 calls for service last year. That was up from about 87,000 the year before. So obviously, you know, growing, and we're continuing to see that influx on the workload of our police officers. However, they continue to respond each and every day, serve the community of Victoria very well in that regard. And just walking you through a little bit of the report itself, we kind of identify our retirees that retired last year, and then a little bit about our training and recruitment. Certainly, I think that that's one of the things that the bear is mentioning, is we really stepped up and made some correct decisions when it came to some recruiting efforts. And I also want to thank each and every one of you for assisting us in that endeavor by giving us the tools necessary to go out and aggressively recruit good officers and bring them to Victoria. And that was, again, partly because of Council's and the city manager's ability to give us some of those incentive tools that we used very effectively in doing that. Obviously, the next page, we just talked a little bit about our social media and our, and I think that that was another bright spot of the year, and we certainly exploded when it came to that area. Some very creative people, but I think it's consistent with our theme that we're going to be very, very present in the social media realm, and we see a lot of return on investment in that area. And the community outreach, I'm very proud of some of the efforts that we've undertaken in terms of how we continue to connect with the community. And some of those are listed here in the annual report as well. I won't read through each and every one of them, but certainly, we tried to identify a lot of the stuff that we do in connecting with the community, engaging the community, informing the community of events going on within the Police Department, and how we can work together to solve many of the problems that we're faced with. And then the middle section is just our awards for 2014, where we highlight the individual accomplishments of those employees that received special recognition throughout the year. And I will note that, in keeping with the spirit of being nice to the fire chief, I did allow a picture to remain of the fire chief in my annual report, so I'm eagerly anticipating his report where obviously I'll be depicted somewhere in there. And then the crime data, like, again, we're certainly open and available to answer any questions relative to that. We really spent a lot of time on that a couple of weeks ago, but then it's all pretty laid out here again for you to review in that sense. So one of the things that I've mentioned to you before, and I think it's important to mention to you again, is on the crime data relative to calls for service, it's got its own page, I'll refer to that one again, and that's what's showing you an increase in workload. But I think one of the most important benchmarks of any police department is, how quickly do you respond to your core mission, and that being emergency 911 calls for service? When somebody picks up the phone and says, "I need help, I need the police department," how quickly do you get there? And you can see that in 2013, we had 87,000 calls for service, and we were there, on average, you know, 6.23 minutes, which is very good. In 2014, we had an increase in workload, and we shaved about a minute off of that to 5.22. And there'll be cities that would really love to have that kind of response time. So certainly, I was very pleased to see those numbers come in as favorable as they did. And then the last couple of pages, just some candid shots of our officers in action. And that concludes my report, but I certainly stand ready to answer any questions you might possibly have.
Chief, a couple of years ago, we implemented a STEP program.
Yes.
And you made reference to the recruiting efforts to try to close the gap in the number of vacancies of police officers.
Yes, sir.
How's that come along? Could you give us a little bit more on that?
Well, we've closed that gap considerably. We now, you know, when we were faced with some of the issues last year, we were up as high as 26 vacancies, and now it's down to seven, I believe, right now. How, the STEP plan has assisted us greatly, because it's out there, it's in the, you know, we publicize it, but then people, you know, on the internet, they can certainly look and see what they're going to actually make in the upcoming years. So it's a very important tool for us to be able to have that, because we can certainly project out at least in a few-year increments of what, you know, incoming officers are going to make. So it's been very beneficial to have a program such as that.
We see ourselves more competitive now with other departments, hopefully?
Yes.
Good.
The key's going to be not to fall behind.
I hope that.
You will see that coming up in the budget, that we're already starting to, and that's not just the Police Department, it's citywide for all of our employees, the key's not to fall behind, so.
Well, I hope we do a review of that to see where we are, so we do not fall behind.
We do, yes, sir. You'll see it when we present the budget, those first work sessions we bring you in June.
Okay, thank you.
And that's something that's a fluid situation. I mean, we were successful last year, and then now you'll see other agencies that'll... I mean, we were successful last year, and then now you'll see other agencies that'll go and try to be a little bit more successful, more aggressive, and so it's an ongoing process for us, so, but we'll continue to work hard in that area.
It's a common problem around the state with departments. Some of them have much more vacancies, larger departments. It's kind of frightening, but...
You have nine vacancies for certified officers as of Monday, so you were close.
It moves.
It does. And you probably have some in the mail already doing backgrounds and all.
Yes.
And we don't take those off the list until they actually show up for work, even though he might have made a job offer, they stay on the list.
And they stay on the books for a little while longer before I, I take them off sooner than they actually...
Yeah, they have to show up for work for us to take them off.
Yes.
And I would expect that our vetting's a lot more stricter in doing the background on potential officers and new recruits and so forth.
It's always been strict.
I believe that we've always had a very strong, you know, background process in the vetting of potential employees.
That's been going on for a long time. What the chief did, though, during this huge vacancy we had last year, he did not waiver from his standards, which I think some agencies would have, but he chose not to do that. He stayed with his standards, so we continued to get the cream of the crop, so...
Good.
Before he moves, just, I know you know, the two chiefs have a great relationship, and we joke about that, but I would hate for somebody tuning in to the TV channel to see us talking about that, not knowing it was a joke, and it is a joke, because these two guys, great relationship and work well together, so...
Review.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
So, that brings us up to the last report of the night. Tanner, the fire chief, I'll tell you to be kind, too.
He who speaks last has the last word, right?
That's right. That'll be me.
I didn't see you defending me when he was thrown in.
I thought it was the guy with the gavel. Sorry, we gotta stop. Back to it.
Between me and him, it's me.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's certainly a privilege to be in front of you tonight and to kind of recap our 2014. And I obviously didn't get the memo about no presentations, so bear with me as we're going to roll through a presentation here. And certainly, if you have any questions along the way, I certainly welcome those. I would be remiss if I didn't start off by talking about our most valued asset, and that's our people. And we've got an incredible group of firefighters, men and women, that work in our department each day, and work really hard to put out a fantastic service in this community. We put them in some very challenging positions and some very challenging situations, and they continue to step up and do a fantastic job. So, we're blessed to have the staff that we do. Kind of getting into the fire operations, and this should kind of follow with your book a little bit, I really wanted to just tackle two or three items in each one of those pages. I want to start off with support vehicles. That was a concept we came to you with about a year and a half ago, that we felt like was going to be a more efficient model by responding in a Tahoe vehicle in place of those ladder trucks. We were able to get that started in '13, fully implemented at two stations in '14. And you can see the numbers there, '13, it was kind of late in the year, but in '14, you know, that's 1,261 calls that a fire truck did not make. So, we know that the, that concept is working very well. The guys have warmed up to it, and I think they enjoy responding in those little smaller vehicles. I think in time, we're going to be able to tell what the actual true dollar savings is to us from the wear and tear on those ladder trucks. I also want to talk about our health and wellness program. We started that in November of 2013, gave a kind of a year's notice to all of our employees that we were going to be doing a mandatory fitness evaluation at the end of every year. And the goal there was to try to encourage a healthier lifestyle. We really wanted to see our folks be healthy. There's plenty of data out there that shows that firefighters still die at a very alarming rate from heart attacks, and we just didn't feel like we needed to wait until it happened here to get out in front of that. And so, and how do we measure the effectiveness of that program? Is, we set a goal to try to reduce our workers' comp claims, our three-year average by 50%. We were actually able to exceed that by, to the tune of 87%. So, we're very proud of that. We've had several people, several firefighters that have made significant changes in their lifestyle, and they feel much better about themselves, they're more productive. So, it's been a win-win all the way around. And then also, last year, we were able to implement the Fire Pro QA system, which complements the emergency medical dispatching as well. So, now any call for service through the fire department will go through that question-and-answer session so that we're getting the most appropriate unit dispatched to the scene. Looking at our medical, kind of on the medical side of things, we implemented an electronic patient care reporting system called ESO last year, and that has, that's also packaged with what's called a CradlePoint, which is a Wi-Fi that's attached to every unit. You may think, why is that significant? Well, we can now carry a tablet to the patient's bedside, and for years, and I can remember back many years ago when I was riding the ambulance, is you often wrote vital signs and history and things like that on your glove. And when you pulled your glove off, you had to stretch it back out and try to figure out what you wrote to put in the report. Well, we've come a long way since then. These guys can do everything at the bedside because they're connected back to the Wi-Fi of the units. We changed to a different billing company, Emergicon. Pleased to announce that, you know, we reduced the bill by 50% of what we're charging our customers for an ambulance bill, but we did so without losing any revenue. And so, what we really hoped would work, would happen, did. And so, we're pleased with that, and we look forward as we move forward with Emergicon. They've done a really good job for us, and so, we're real pleased with that, how that's gone. Plus, it's making our system obtainable. And I think we have perhaps made ourselves a little bit unattainable by some citizens. We also added the Lucas II CPR devices. It's never a probably good time when you're getting up talking about CPR in front of your council members, but these are incredible tools that, we've gotten four of them so far. We were able to get three of them off of a grant, different grants, and you'll probably see them again in our next budget. Our goal is to get them on every unit, so, and we've had those for just a few weeks, so we'll see how that works out.
And this is where I like to do my shameless plug. If there's anybody out there that wishes to donate money for a Lucas II, we'd love to have it, so, any foundations?
Yeah, we got, bought one, got three free last year, so it worked out real well.
Did you say how much they were?
They're about $16,000. And then lastly, off of our medical, last year, we were awarded the Mission Lifeline Award from the American Heart Association, and that's for the work those guys do on cardiac patients. We were awarded at the bronze level last year. Our goal this year will be to build an increase to a silver, and we've already applied for that, so hopefully, we'll get that data back very shortly. In our training division, we implemented a very robust driver training program. It's a program that all of our employees have to go through, depending on the level of response vehicle they're going to be driving. So, there's a different program for an ambulance driver than there is a fire truck, as a tanker, as opposed to a ladder truck. We added some additional folks to our Swiftwater Rescue Team, and the training division was also able to receive and apply for over $53,000 in grants, back in, infiltrated back into the department. Training is also, you know, it's really the core of our foundation. It's how we grow, it's how we, it's how we grow as an organization, and we improve our statistics. For the rest of this week, beginning tonight, ending on Thursday night, we've been training at the apartment complexes across from UHV. We have gained so much from that. It's just been fantastic. We're changing some protocols, some policies based off hands-on training we've been able to accomplish there. But tonight, tomorrow night, and Thursday, every shift is kind of culminating with a big escalating event out there tonight, over the next three nights. So, the training has been really good. We're really proud of the ways that we've grown through our training division.
And thankful for that agreement with UHV to allow that training.
Oh, yeah, UHV was fantastic. I mean, they, we approached them about the concept, would you be okay if we went and tore your buildings up? And they were proud to accommodate us, and so, it's worked out very well.
Give them a discount on the demo.
Well, they made us an offer, but we turned it down. If we wanted to burn it down, we could save them $1.5 million.
I was going to say.
Well, it just depends on where that 1.5's going. Our fire marshal's office, they're busy folks, just like Jared's office. They're involved in a lot of the construction, everything's going on. They also implemented a program called the Compliance Engine last year, and that's where contractors can go online and update information as they are working on a system. Instead of our folks having to go back out there continuously, they can work through this online database. They had 246 of those cases last year, and when they went out to do the final CA, 87% were in compliance. So, that has proved to be a very efficient model, and I think all the contractors really, really enjoy that and having that ability. Public education, you know, last year, they did Dallas Toberfest. If you've never had an opportunity to go out and see them, they're very talented. They do a great job. All the, all the character, singing, everything is done by firefighters, and I've had a lot of fun watching them with that. Their fee, the fees that they collect for building, not building inspections, but plan reviews, have gone up significantly from last year to this year. That as well as a sign of the difference, the increase in activity going on in the community. It's not a huge dollar amount in the overall scheme of things, but they've been rocking along about $7,000 to $8,000 to $9,000 a year, and last year, they had a pretty significant jump. So, they're getting challenged in a lot of ways. They're really being pulled in to keep up with everything that's going on in the community. They also were awarded the Make, You Make a Difference Award from the VIST last year for their, for their public education programs. Looking at kind of our annual response numbers, we had a little over 7% increase in total calls last year, most calls we ever made. That continues to increase on us. Last year, we had a little downturn, and then this year, it significantly went up again. Our fire response calls were up a little over 16%, and our EMS calls went up about 7%. And also this year, I've traditionally not done this, but I broke down kind of the responses that we're making into the county, because as the county continues to grow and sprawl, our calls for service in those areas are doing the same. So, our calls into the county represent about 20% of our total call volume.
Chief, I'm really glad you did that. You'll be supplying this to the county commissioners, hopefully?
Yeah, we usually try to do an annual review with them as well.
It's interesting that exactly half of the calls for fire were to the, outside the city limits.
We, and you know, the challenging situation in the county is we, by the time we get there, it's, our hands are full.
It's just, you know, it's not proportional. In that area, it's half, which is interesting. The other areas, it's more proportional, obviously due to the numbers, but a lot of people don't realize that you're a county-wide department, you know? And they do participate with us in that, so I think the public, it's good for them to know that.
And it's a large response area. 900 square miles is big.
It is.
And it's a lot of area to cover, and so, and they do a good job with it. Looking at some of our response benchmarks, maybe a little hard to depict off that slide, but you can kind of go across and see, these are some of the challenges that we place on ourself, looking to see how quick we can get a full alarm on a structured fire, how quick our, we can get the advanced life support on a response, our average response overall and our average turnout. We as well try to connect the dots with our employees on why this is important, and go back to that very first little slide on the far right, where it starts with them getting out of the station quickly and trying to get on scene quickly, and then everything just kind of stair steps from there.
Chief, let me ask you, are those numbers just for the city, within the city?
Yes.
Okay, because I was thinking, if you're going to throw in the county, that's going to shoot your numbers like...
Yeah. We do have to do some windsurizing where we're pulling out those calls into the county that are, you know, we got a 16-mile one-way trip.
Sure, exactly.
You know, that's not, that's not reflective of, they can't help that, you know, the guys can't, so...
Great, thank you.
Looking at our performance benchmarks, one of the things I want to point out that it may seem insignificant, and it's our medic unit availability. And I as well can't see from that distance what the number is. Our goal is 75% of the time, we want to have our medics available, and we're actually able to accomplish that 82% of the time. And you may think, why is that important? Before I came up here today, we had a wreck out, out in the county, four ambulances on one call. We only have five in the city. So, our ability to turn our equipment quickly enables us to be able to answer all those other benchmarks, and if we've got all of our units tied up, it's very tough to be able to answer the call for service, whatever that might be. And so, some of the technology that we have at our hands now today is a big helper in that, that we're not staying in the hospitals for 30, 45 minutes trying to get our reports done. They can drop their patients off and get back in service, because if you think about it, we really don't have anyone else to turn to. I mean, we're it. I mean, we're not neighbors with Houston, or neighbors with another large city that we can get a mutual aid unit to come over very quickly. So, we have to be creative in ways to ensure that we can turn our equipment back, get it back in service as quickly as possible, so that we have units available for that very next call, whatever that call may be. And we've had some challenges this year. I mean, I'll be honest, we've been caught several times where we didn't have nothing to respond to a call, and we're having to do emergency callbacks, try to get people in, try to get something staffed, and, you know, thankfully, those are just, those are few far and in-between, but they do happen at times, and one event can really create a challenge for us, just like it did this afternoon about 4:30, so...
And Tanner, you know, just to reiterate, we respond with the same amount of units out in the county as we do within the city limits. There is no difference on response for the, I know, along, you know, several years, there was the belief we only responded with very limited units in the county, and that's not the case.
Yeah, we don't distinguish the county line. We send the same, and, you know, a lot of that's for the, so that we have the appropriate resources to be able to handle the situation at hand. It's also for the safety of our employees. You know, we don't want to send just a fire, one fire engine out to a structured fire and hope they can just pull the whole thing off by theirself. That's asking for trouble, so...
But you would think Station 6 is going to help some of that?
Absolutely. I mean, we still have a challenge getting up into that north part of the community. You know, I mean, if you try to navigate Navarro, but really at any time of the day, it's tough. I mean, it's tough. So, that's, and, you know, and all the construction that's going on out there, the population shift, and I probably can tell you exactly what that is, but it's pretty significant into those areas, and so, that Station 6 is going to be a huge help. This, again, just some data we ran, just looking at kind of our time of day, you know, what's the most frequency of our time of day, same way with, you know, how many calls we make by the month. The incidence by time of day has helped us to more accurately determine when we do training, when we do things. We don't want to be training at the peak of our response, so this is good for more internal, more data. Our critical care, again, those were, that's an area that we've really, I think it's sold, and we've really grown, and we continue to grow each and every year. The survivability of our patients is paramount, and our ability to apply this, these benchmarks in every call that we make has significantly made an impact. There's one in there, and I don't know if it's in this one. One of the measurements we look at is how long it takes us to extricate a patient, and I was talking to Charmel about this earlier, and I want to say it's on, and I'm sorry, I slid right by that. I guess I don't have it. We were looking at...
This was the first one?
No.
Yeah, it's the third one on the top.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you. I wanted to point that particular slide out. Trauma extrication, it's in that very first box. And one of the things we've been looking at over the last couple of years is, in trauma cases, you know, the damage has been done when the trauma actually happens. But that clock is ticking, you know? I mean, it's ticking on our patients. And what can we do as an organization to try to shorten that time down? And we've really made a concerted effort to focus on our ability to extricate patients. And we have spent a tremendous amount of time and resources in teaching over and over and over better extrication methods. And our numbers have significantly declined. If you look at from 2012 to 2014, you know, we've shaved off almost eight and a half minutes in our ability to extricate a patient out of a car. So that goes back to that training foundation in that, you know, how do we know our training's working? It comes out in the numbers and the data that we're trying to measure. This is kind of a, it doesn't look too good up there. But we took, and GIS helped us with this as well, in taking and putting a pin on every response we made in the city. And you can see, we pretty much blanket the city on all calls. There's not any one area that's probably any more thicker than it is on the other. But that's EMS, fire, and the other. Lastly, you know, Station 6, they've had some delays because of the weather. You know, we were looking at a July 20th to 25th completion date when this thing started. And I think they've already gotten 27 days of rain that has not allowed them to do any work out there. But it is coming along. And, you know, we've got the foundation up, and they've got iron up, they've already done some of the walls on the truck room bay. So we're still looking at probably an August, late August completion date. If they're able to get started and get it dried in, I think it will, they will continue to progress. And then we certainly appreciate the volunteer groups that we have. They continue to do a great job for us. You know, last year, if you'll remember, the city was gracious enough to help the VCFAA with an older vehicle that we were no longer going to be using as a response vehicle. And then also our chaplains group. They help us a lot. You know, one of our goals is to make sure our employees go home well. And that doesn't mean just with all their body parts. We want to make sure that mentally, they're well. And our chaplains program really helps us with that as well, so. Any questions?
Station 6, will the road be in by the time the building's up?
Yes.
They'll try to get out there, and it's still quite a challenge.
Yeah. The road will probably be done a couple months before we're done.
Okay, thank you.
That's the biggest challenge, is getting to the site. And we're trying not to go through any of the neighborhoods to access the site. Trying to continue to just use Ball Airport Road. And it's muddy.
Regarding the, you know, the discussion of that station, you know, we had a lot of discussion here about it, and your comment a few minutes ago. I remember going out to the groundbreaking in that choke point on Navarro in front of the mall. I didn't think I'd make it in time, the traffic was so bad. Do you remember that? I know Mr. Alvarez was there.
I was lost, too.
Yeah. And then I look at what Jared shows tonight with the apartment complexes in that area, and I'm even more reassured that that was a good decision, a sound decision. It's a lot more people living out there. And when I think of, you know, someone's child or parent or someone hurt, and the ambulance trying to get to them, wow, you know, so.
It's a challenge today, it really is. And those guys do the best they can. I mean, just because we're in a big wrecked truck with lights and sirens doesn't mean they'll pay us much.
Right.
It's unfortunate, but it's the truth.
And sometimes it's just completely blocked.
Yeah.
So I want to ask real quick, the Emergicon, the switch to them, that's pretty amazing. You said 1650 to 850, that's per EMS call?
Yeah, that's the average bill.
Wow, okay.
And we did have some cases where, what we were doing is we were itemized billing. And so depending on how severe the call was, or how much treatment the paramedics had to provide to the patient, you could see some bills upwards of $2,200, $2,400. And really, we just kind of pulled back from that concept and said, but what's a reasonable charge that the insurances are going to pay? And because we're still only collecting X amount of dollars, but we're just writing off, you know, 75% of that bill. But in doing so, in most cases, we have greatly offended our citizens. Because it's like, you know, I had a few calls, unfortunate calls, where people told me that it costs more to be transported than it did to be seen in the ER. And so we, you know, the city management and finance and myself, we kind of worked through that and tried to figure out a better approach. And kind of took the concept that if the bill's a little bit more reasonable, people will be more inclined to pay it. And it has worked.
Very good. Over the years, that was, you know, I've heard that, had received many calls over the years on what you're talking about, the cost. And I think that's just tremendous, so encouraging. I know it's a real positive development.
Well, thank you. It's, you know, in a time when you see everything seem to be increasing, you know, it was really neat that we were able to bring that cost down, but not sacrifice, you know, the money that it takes to operate that service.
Very good.
Thank you, Tanner.
Thank you.
That's it.
Nothing else on our agenda?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. We're adjourned.